All right, so now we're gonna finish the questions and we're gonna come back to candidate number one. So Mr. Gillians, your fourth question. Could you state what specific actions the city should take to respond to the concerns about All Aboard Florida?
Specific actions, right? All Aboard Florida?
That's correct.
First thing that I would do if I were sitting up here is I would get with the other municipalities to the north and south of us. And there's a very important issue. We have a hospital that's on the east side of the railroad tracks. Now we're gonna have more trains coming through. We're gonna have, we have a lot of senior citizens in our community, and we're gonna have an emergency vehicle sitting there waiting to try to get across. So I would get with the other communities, get with their lawyer. Let's pool our resources. Let's get a strategic plan to slow the train down by taking them into court. And make sure that they not only build a new bridge over the river, the Sebastian River, but they build us two more overpasses on 512, which are major arteries in our community. They have the money. They now, from what I understand in the paper, they don't need government subsidized financing. They can use their form of bonding, which is great. Bond out a few extra million dollars and let's get an overpass built so that it doesn't disrupt our quality of life here in Sebastian. And we can do that by having a strategic plan, talking with the county, talking with the city of Rio Beach. Let's say, let's do it right down the alley. We only need one law firm. We don't need to have three, four, five different lawyers. And we take them into court. I moved to this community because I like the quality of life. I got out of New York because I didn't want to deal with it. Now they're talking about expanding the Panama Canal. It's not all about, listen, we all know that Amtrak loses billions of dollars and the federal government subsidizes it. So more freight trains are coming. It's not about the railroad. It's about the freight trains that are coming right behind you. When the Panama Canal's finishing expansion, they use this as a front. You're gonna see freight trains like you've never seen before. And I don't want it disrupting our quality of life here in Sebastian. Build an overpass. We have emergency when it's dealing with the health and the safety of our residents. We'll let the courts decide. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Your fifth question. Please expand, I'm sorry, please explain how you would like...
Take your time.
I'm gonna start it. Please explain how you would actively control employee costs such as pensions, deferred compensation, and healthcare.
Employee cost, pensions, healthcare. You know, that's been a problem in this community for quite a while. I think they're called this year by the PBA or the communication workers. I wonder why. They've been chipped for a while, by the way. They just recently, I think, got an increase, which I think is good. They needed to get caught up. But, you know, we have, I think about, I was looking at the budget, I think about 140 or 50 employees in the city here on the payroll. And back when the economy went south, the admin was good about cutting and cutting way back. And that's the way it should have been, because we did have that excess of employees, which means we were paying pension, health insurance, and that builds up. And, you know, people don't realize it's a lot of money at the end of the year. We're talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if I get a seat up here, I'm gonna make sure that the employees are taken care of. Why? To keep the cost down, we have to subcontract a lot of that work out to private business. They can do things a lot more efficient than government can, okay? And then in the end, you'll find reduced pensions, reduced health insurance, and then we just need an administrator to cut up the good contracts and have private enterprise come in and subsidize instead of constantly adding more employees to the payroll here. So that's one of the ways I would address that. There's other ways. I could get very creative as a businessman, but I just got my 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And your last question. The city's CRA district was originally created in 1995. Are you satisfied with the redevelopment today and what further improvements would you like to see the city accomplish?
I was part of the CRA when it first got started, by the way. And there was a certain committee that we all could not come to some sort of agreement on how that money that's gonna be coming in, which is in the millions, by the way, over the years. I mean, if you go back and count from 1995 on much money that's been coming in, that's been a little slush fund. A lot of people don't know about the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Association. But am I satisfied? Absolutely not. I think it's been mishandled, mismanaged. They're helping their friends down there without, I mean, with this working waterfront project, we've got over $5 million. It's an unfunded liability on the taxpayers of this community. They took a very valuable piece of property, it was bringing $25,000 in taxes. Now what are we getting? We're footing a bill for maintenance. We're not getting any taxes. We're footing a bill on insurance. We're making all the repairs. Now we're building a new fish house through the Florida inland navigation district, by the way. They raised your taxes last year, okay? So you get taxed twice. And they don't put it out to bid. They put it in the newspaper, tell you about it, and then hand it off to their friends. That's not the way to do business in the community. Everybody should get a fair shot down there when there's $5 million of our tax money invested in something that's in litigation, Teresa. It's in litigation still. They took advantage of Mrs. McManus. She put over $100,000. Now we're subsidizing some people that are running a business down there where there are fish markets in the community that pay taxes, they pay insurance, and we're subsidizing these guys down there. For what? To bring attractive trailers, to get the river rats to come out, pick up the fish that's left on the docks, or maybe the birds that poop all over the place and the pelicans. We need sport fishing people coming to here to spend money, day triggers, spend the money in our businesses so that the businesses can survive. So I know a lot more about the CRA, go to daniellevesebastian.com.
I believe that. Thank you.
Sure do.
All right, so that was your last question until your closing statement. And we're gonna move to Mr. Adams for your last three. Question number four, Mr. Adams. Currently, the members of city council serve as the CRA advisory committee. Should the city establish a separate CRA advisory committee? And if so, why?
I believe that there should probably be a separate CRA, just because you'd have input from the business owners who are actually down there and know exactly what's going on. And it'd probably give you a greater insight into what they see as their issues. Being out of the council, not necessarily, you won't necessarily have all of that firsthand information. But if the theory was made about people who are actually there as business owners and live their life day to day, they could probably provide you better insight.
Okay, thank you. Your fifth question. How do you feel the working waterfront project will impact our community once it is completed?
The working waterfront, I believe, will be an asset to the community. It's something that I think we love. The people will showcase our heritage, will showcase what Sebastian is all about. It'll be something else to attract visitors to our city. By doing so, bringing more dollars to our city and to the businesses, the businesses in the area will definitely benefit from it. People will come to visit the waterfront, they'll be eating in the restaurants, shopping in the shops, they'll stay over at some hotel or something. It will bring, I think, a lot of benefit for us. So I think that the working waterfront will be something very good for us.
Okay, thank you. And your final question, number six. The city currently has a reserve fund. How much do you think we should have in the reserve fund and why?
Our reserve is, I think, right now, like 5.1 million. The amount that we should have, I forget four, but it's, I believe it's somewhere around 3 million. 3 million, I think, would be adequate for any issues that might pop up, a storm or anything like that. The additional funds, it's a nice cushion to have, but I believe that extra funds could be used for other areas within the city that might need rehabilitation or here's a project that needs to be worked on. And you would be required less from your citizens in terms of taxes because you'd have that additional fund that you could use to complete these projects. So the amount that we have in our reserves, I think, is just a little bit high. I think we could get by with the 3 million and use the additional to for other projects.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes your six questions. We will move to Mr. Hill. Your fourth question. What are the three most important traits or talents that you feel are necessary for a city manager to be effective in implementing council policies?
Well, I think first and foremost, the most important thing for a city manager is to be a good leader. And to be a good leader, there are several different traits that go into that. Being able to listen, listen to the concerns of the citizens, listen to the concerns of the council, listen to the concerns of the employees, whether they be management or general staff. Being able to communicate, being able to take the vision that the city council expresses and put that in a little box, spread it throughout the city and make that vision become reality. To be able to communicate, very critical. City Sebastian's lucky in that we have Joe Griffin. I think he's a really solid city manager. He's done a lot already in his role as a leader in this community. He's made some adjustments that make sense. You can see his leadership skills in the way he communicates and listening as well as delivering information to council members. And the esteem of core, if I will, amongst the city employees seems to be on the rise, which is very important. So those are some very important traits. I think we've done a pretty good job of acquiring Joe.
Okay, thank you. Question five. Do you have any ideas on how the city's economic development plan should be implemented?
Well, I honestly think we are implementing it, you know, as we go forward. We have, in our CRA district, for instance, we've started providing grant funds for folks to hook up to sewer so that they can get off the septic and out the lagoon. We've provided CRA, FSL grant funds for facade sign landscaping that help businesses beautify their business, which in turn helps the community as a whole because, you know, a beautiful community is what we're all about here in Sebastian. What we've done at the airport by generating, rather, building some hangars and leasing them out, the beautification of the road going in, I think all those are part of the economic development plan. They can get a much more business-friendly community. And over the years, we've been improving that quite a lot. There was a statement made earlier, and I do agree that the landscaping in the CRA is very difficult to achieve for a new young business. But City Sebastian has a grant funding program that does assist with some of that, and I think that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you. And then your final question. What do you think the city's responsibility is in maintaining the health of the Indian River Lagoon?
Well, I think the city has a tremendous responsibility in that, as most of the storm water that comes into the city flows into the Sebastian River and ultimately into the Indian River Lagoon. Therefore, as a city council member for over a decade, I have been working very diligently in trying to make the waters that lead the city of Sebastian cleaner so we're not polluting. We've done the joint, sort of a joint process with St. Anthony Water Management District, where we built the stormwater park in the middle of Sebastian on Angler, and we maintain that park. And that park has been built for, you know, eight, nine years, more than that possibly. And we pump water out of, pump dirty water into with water reservoir filters so that the water is cleaner when you enter the lagoon. We've done the Cali Creek Canal Project, which is to create more capacity for stormwater to hold in before it pours out, and that way all of the solids can settle out. We're putting in nutrient scrubbing baffle boxes along our riverfront so that the water that goes into them not only comes out cleaner with less solids, but also less nutrients. So, you know, really, it all then policy of everything we can do to make the water cleaner, we should be doing, working with the county to get the sewer extension put through so that we can get more businesses and more of the development along our riverfront onto sewer is very important as well. So all of those things are things that we should be doing. If it's gonna benefit the Indian River Lagoon, and there's proof that it's gonna benefit the Indian River Lagoon, then we should be going forward with those things. And we have, quite frankly, the City Sebastian, the leadership in the City Sebastian has done a great job with that over the last decade.
Okay, thank you. That concludes your six questions. On to Mr. Hurley. Candidate number four. And your fourth question is, what city ordinances would you like to see reviewed or revised? And tell us why.
There are a lot of city ordinances. That requires some quick thinking on my part. Nothing comes to mind that stands out in the recent past as far as something that needs to get reworked, redone. What we do need to do is strengthen some ordinances that have to do with abandoned or backclosed homes. It is a fairly large problem in this city. It's a fairly large problem in Florida. All of us have seen homes with a grass 18 inches, two feet high. It takes a long time for code enforcement to get through all the paperwork just to mow the lawn, and then they have to go through it 30 days later again. It's something that does need to be addressed and changed to help the look of the city. If we say it's a beautiful city, then we should keep it that way. Part of the problem on a foreclosed home is just plain finding out who owns it at the particular time and who's responsible for it. But that's one thing that I would, an ordinance I very much like to see strengthened, and I've said that several times to several people within the city, but we just haven't gotten to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your next question, I know you've talked about already, but it's randomly assigned, so we're gonna ask anyway. Should the city allocate resources toward the All Aboard Florida project?
As a lot of people have spoken here tonight, All Aboard Florida is a complex issue. Are they going to build the passenger rail? It's really up in the air. I would say, looking at past history of passenger rail in the United States, this is a fact, it isn't one that makes a profit. The best passenger rail example is the Acela train from Boston to Washington in the most populous corridor in the United States, run by Amtrak. The trains are full. They can't make money. How anybody thinks they're gonna make money from Orlando to Miami is totally beyond me. So what is this really about? It's about freight. It's about double-tracking this system and putting in heavy freight. What have we got to protect Sebastian from? I would not want to spend a dollar, but freight is inevitable. So what are we gonna do? We've got to protect ourselves. We're doing that as we speak. We committed, we haven't spent. We committed $50,000 in seed money towards a half a million dollar grant for quiet zones. At the same time, we are working on getting All Aboard Florida to pay the entire cost of quiet zones. We don't want to spend a nickel, but if I believe this is correct, I'll hold out 2% to be wrong, but we have to have an application in by October 15th to the FDOT for quiet zone money. And we have made that application, so we had to make that commitment. We can withdraw it. We don't have to take it if, in fact, All Aboard Florida doesn't.
Okay, thank you. And then your sixth question. Do you think the airport master plan should be updated? And if so, what changes would you make?
Okay, on a regular basis, and I'm pretty sure it's, we have to update it every 10 years, I believe, according to the FAA. And we're between master plans at this moment. We will, the airport people will be working on that. Are there things that we need to do? Probably yes. One of the issues ultimately, if we're going to develop industry around the airport, we have to consider what goes on on the west side of the airport. We're pretty well taking care of the east side of the airport. When this latest project gets done on East Airport Drive, there will be a group of areas where people can build small businesses at a low cost along East Airport Drive. On the west side of the airport, we have an old ordinance that restricts the buffer zone. I don't believe that that restriction is legal under FAA rules and under the master plan. That whole area needs to be debated and taken care of with the FAA when we upgrade that master plan. At this moment, there aren't hordes of people screaming for, to put buildings in that buffer zone, but ultimately, it will happen. And that's one of the areas that we will develop along Road from Road as time goes on.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes your six questions. And finally, candidate number five, Mr. Iovino. Your fourth question. What are the next steps the city should take in implementing the economic development plan of the comprehensive plan? You want me to repeat that? Very good. Okay. What are the next steps the city should take in implementing the economic development element, I'm sorry, of the comprehensive plan?
Can you say it one more time?
Sure. What are the next steps the city should take in implementing the economic development element of the comp plan or the comprehensive plan?
Moving forward with the plan, actually implementing the plan and following through it, I'm not a 100%, familiar with that plan, however, I feel that any plan that the city develops, that they don't spend a lot of time debating on the plan, when they actually head forward and move forward with the plan in order to help business and residents. Thank you.
Okay. Question number five. For the 2015 budget, city staff recommended the taxes remain at the current mileage rate, but city council voted to increase it. What is your position on the increase?
Finally, I get one of the good questions. I'm listening to everybody here. I couldn't answer that question. What a great question, and I'm glad that it came up to me because I actually sat here several weeks ago during one of the budget hearings, and I implored the city council to stick with the rollback mileage rate, which would have actually decreased taxes, accomplished a good portion of the goals that needed to be accomplished within the city, according to the city manager's report. And not only did they not take that under advisement, but, and I don't recall what the exact vote was, it was like a 4 to 1 or a 3 to 2, I'm not sure, because I wasn't here for the final hearing, but they actually raised it to the higher mileage rate. And I'm not necessarily against doing, raising taxes if it's what's in the best interest of the city, but if you have the ability, and it makes common sense to me, if you have the ability to lower taxes and still accomplish what you need to do, why are we raising taxes? Because of what may be. And part of what I brought up during that discussion was that we had a $5.1 million reserve, and that the town of Indian River Shores had a $6 million reserve. Why is it that the town of Indian River Shores has a $6 million reserve for billion-dollar real estate, and we have a 5.1 million? So I brought up, why couldn't we use some of those monies to fund the lagoon, All Aboard Florida, and some of the other projects that we need to? And I was told, well, we might, there's a possibility that there could be another two hurricanes hit back to back. I worked those hurricanes that hit back to back, and in fact, I worked 12 on, 12 off, 12 on, 12 off. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. And then your final question, question number six. Are you familiar with the comprehensive plan of the city? And do you have any suggestions on how it should be modified? I swear we're not picking on any of these arrangements.
Again, I did some, I did my homework, for the most part, before I came here and I sat down, and I sat down during this debate tonight. I did look over the budget again. I actually watched the debate in my chair. I have to apologize, I did not pay a lot of attention to the comprehensive plan, however, I did pay a lot of attention to the budget. And I think that, since I can't directly answer that question, what I will say is that I think that, you know, when we do come across things where we don't have any answers for, we need to know where our resources are and are gonna be able to find those resources in order to answer that. And I've been in law enforcement a long, long time, and clearly, I don't have all the answers, and I don't claim to have all the answers. However, I am very resourceful in educating myself, researching it, and coming up with the correct answer, or the best answer, or the best solution for that problem. And if elected, I absolutely will do that, and I will do the best for the city whole heart. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes our six questions each. Great job, everybody. And I'm gonna give Mr. Iovino just a moment to take a sip of water or cut his breath because now we're gonna go in reverse order for your closing statements. So you're gonna have two minutes each to do that. You can use your closing statement to address or clarify any topic that was raised. Perhaps there was a question that was asked of another candidate, and you thought, boy, I really wanted to answer that one. You can address it in your closing statement. You can explain any other matter that maybe you haven't covered already. And as I mentioned earlier, it's really important, this is your opportunity to tell the voters why you're the best choice. So with that being said, Mr. Iovino, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So let me state your first and last name. I'm sorry. Mr. Albert Iovino, would you please pursue your closing statement?
Yes, ma'am. Just to touch on some of the hot topics real quick, All Aboard Florida, 110% against that. I think we're gonna wind up with 50 some odd trains coming through. I have experienced train delays over the years, working in law enforcement. I've been in ruptured disturbances, car crashes, and other emergencies where I've had to backtrack through the county, through cities, eight, nine, 10, 12 blocks in order to get to where I was going. And I think that it's gonna bring about noise pollution, more crime, and it's gonna, it's gonna cause problems with our business and actually bringing folks into the city. There was a healthcare question about employees and how to take care of our employees as far as healthcare raises go. I have been working with and continue to work with putting together a committee, if you will, to working on a group insurance for all public safety employees within the county. As most of you know, as far as health insurance goes, the more people you have on the plan, the cheaper the rates are. So I think that's gonna be a benefit to everybody. As far as taxes go, like I said, I think that we need to focus on what needs to get done and not spending $32,000 for streets we've been when the year before we were spending $7,000. It's just, it's a waste of money. And if I get elected, or I should say, when I get elected, I'm gonna bring back common sense, fiscal responsibility, and working for the little man. That's what I'm gonna bring back. And I have the resources and the education and the ability to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Agarali, you have two minutes for closing statement.
Thank you. I wanna thank the chamber, Teresa. Well, I'll thank the chamber, Teresa, everyone else. I said before, and I'll state it again, the key things that I want to work on in my council when I get elected, the lagoon, specifically the stormwater runoff. Some of you saw the city council meeting last night, we've got to deal with the sewer situation with the county. That is a real hot button. We've got to get that cooperation level back. The All-Aboard Florida thing, we pretty well talked it to death, but we've got to deal with it. We started to do that. We've got to follow through. The council has got to be strong in pushing to see if we can stop at least the passenger side of this thing. Road funding, our roads are falling apart. We're behind. We've got some extra funding, we're working on it, but we need to continue. City to business communications, we literally don't have any. The city doesn't communicate well with the business community. Business community doesn't communicate with the city. We need to do something about that. I have some key ideas on how to do that. Continue the conservative finances of the city. Key thing, the five point one million dollar general fund reserve, it's an insurance policy. The city council and the budget committee have had presentations about this from the chief financial officer. It is our insurance fund if we have a natural disaster. I have the time to devote to the council, I have the knowledge of the city from eight years of being a volunteer. I'm not putting up any signs and I'm not asking for any money. I asked for your vote on November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Candidate number three, Councilman Jim Hill, two minutes.
Thank you again, Teresa, for coming here and moderating this event tonight, and thanks again to the chamber for holding it. As I said earlier, it's been a true pleasure to have a relationship with your organization as well as any other in Sebastian. I am incredibly fond of City Sebastian. I think it's a very special place. It's a place that really drew me in with strings on my heart and brought me here one day, and I've lived here for over twenty-five years now. It's a very special place today, it was a special place back then. I think I have a lot to do with part of the reason it's such a wonderful place to live in today. We're starting to come back from the economic downturn that we had from two thousand seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Jesus, it seems like it's been so tough. But we've done a good job of getting through those difficult times, and as we go into these more prosperous times, Lord willing, we'll be able to continue to improve upon some of the things that we need to improve upon, but also maintain and protect the history heritage environment that we have here and that we've all grown to love so much. Those are the things that I've dedicated my life to over the past decade, and that I'll continue to dedicate my life to, should you choose to vote for me on November fourth. I would very much appreciate the opportunity to continue serving you. And if you will go to votemjimhill.com, you can get some more information about me. And on November fourth, I humbly ask that you vote for me.
Thank you. Candidate number two, Jerome Adams. Councilman Jerome Adams, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming on today to give us this opportunity, using your precious time to come and listen to us. I have, as I said, enjoyed my two years that I've been on the council, and I would like to have the opportunity to continue to serve you in this capacity. In just addressing some of the issues that were brought up earlier, ideas for increasing revenue, I have a couple ideas that I've talked about in the past, and I'll probably try and readdress them if re-elected, one of which was called managerizing the golf course. As a third party would take over the golf course, what are its expenses that are associated with it and become theirs? It would not be the city's, so it's not, it would be raising revenues per se, but the expense associated with it would no longer be ours. We've talked about All-Aboard Florida and lagoon and what we can do to alleviate the situation. The monies put aside for that, I believe we could have gotten those from our budget without raising the mileage rate. Our budget was balanced at the rollback rate with excess of over a hundred thousand dollars. At the current mileage rate, three point seven one six six, it was balanced with an excess of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We have the money, but we need to increase it. I am the voice of reason on your council. I am objective. I can make decisions without flying out the handle. And I ask for your vote come November fourth to give me the chance to work with you again to continue to make our city one, a great city it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, candidate number one, Mr. Damian Gilliams, you have two minutes to close.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank the chamber for holding the meeting time. Most people know that this is probably my fifth time running. And I'm going to continue to run because I care about this community, not going to give up. I'm going to bring out the rights and the wrongs, not going to be afraid to take on the difficult challenges. I'm going to hold staff, their feet to the fire to get things done. Not going to be playing any special favorites with people in the community, with the working waterfront especially. That's our jewel. Can't have parking in lieu of, and every business that wants to contribute, put money into the fund, and then certain businesses tap the CRA fund to have parking put in front of their business. It's not right. I'm going to clean up the, that's the first place to start. Let's get the concrete helicopter pad that's sitting there next to, let's put that forefront. We'll talk about that. Let's talk about the sewers, the county, get them to do their job. They're the franchise, they can collect all the impact fees, they got fourteen million dollars. Let's stay focused on getting our streets paved. And then I know some of these streets don't belong to us over there by, behind Sandy's Grill. That's an industrial area. It's disgusting that they have those roads, the county roads, but we should be partnering with the county, get that straightened out, because it's not just the airport that provides jobs, it's the industrial area that provides jobs. And so that's something we need to look at. There's a whole host of things. You know, if you go to and ask the candidates on tcpom.com, they hit us with like twenty-seven questions. So I will work hard for you. I will come to the meetings prepared. I will read the documents. I will not look to get out of here early. I don't want to do three or four hours of hard work in. Citizens Academy, let's get people into the government building here, learn government. The city police department does it, save a quarter million dollars. Get the checkbook on the internet, transparency. I've got a lot of great ideas. We can move this community forward. Thank you. Vote for Damian. DamianLoveSebastian.com. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, this concludes the 2014 City of Sebastian City Council Candidates Forum. The chamber and the LGA committee, thank you for your participation in this forum. I also thank our timekeeper, Donna Keys, and the chamber's president, Beth Mitchell. Thank you, ladies. I commend all of you for your willingness to be a public servant. We realize that it does take a lot of time and resources to pursue this office and to serve, if elected, and we are grateful for your dedication. On behalf of the chamber, I also thank you for your thoughtful and very well-mannered discussion this evening. And finally, since this is the last public forum that will be held prior to Election Day, I do want to remind our residents that they will elect two candidates for the Sebastian City Council on Tuesday, November fourth. And in conclusion, I'd like to offer the following quote from the famous author Louis Lamour, "To make democracy work, we must be a notion of participants, not simply observers. One who does not vote has no right to complain." We thank each member of the public in attendance tonight and those watching from home. We encourage and challenge you to thoughtfully exercise your solemn trust, the right to vote. Good night.[1789.77][1789.77]